Well, welcome you all to the Middleton City Hall. I'm going to call the meeting of the Milton Common Council for September 18th, 2018, to order. And the first item is the roll call.
Here.
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 Okay, next one is the comments from the citizens present. And I'm going to make some very quick comments, and then Kathy Olson, and then I think Susan has something to say. I want to say thank you to the public works, folks, that the Gammon Road is almost, almost free of water. So, so I think now the road work can proceed. So, so great job. Kathy?
I just have a note here from Abby. She wanted to give us an update on the Downtown Plaza Advisory Team. The advisory team and other interested parties met on September 6th to go over a presentation from Rochelle Retzenthaler, and she presented the design principles that emerged from the public input sessions, and psyche design showed some concepts for the Downtown Plaza. The advisory team narrowed the concept from four to three, and will be holding another public input session on Monday, October 1st, at 5:30 at the library in the downstairs meeting room. We hope you can all make this meeting, and going forward, the plan is for the advisory team to recommend a final concept based on the public input we received at the October 1st meeting. And we expect the team to present to the Common Council at our, on our meeting in November 6th. And she says that either, either, either meeting in November would be fine, but they have to have it ready for the bid in the winter.
Thank you, Kathy. Susan, you want something to say?
Yes. I would like to introduce Tammy Erickson. She is our new, Tammy, stand up. She's our new senior center director. She's, this is her second day at work. And she comes to us from the city of Monroe. She was the director of their senior center. She's been working for 27 years in the field, and welcome.
Thank you very much.
Just want to mention one really quick thing to you about how impressed I am with the senior center that you have here. And it's amazing to me that you have 381 volunteers within that organization. And I just wanted a quick mention that Thursday, I think some of you received an invitation for a five o'clock volunteer recognition party that we're doing. I think it begins at five, and then dinner is at six. So if you decide you would like to attend, we'd love to have you do that. Just give Sandy Witt a call over at the center. And thank you. It's a real pleasure to be here tonight, and I look forward to learning a whole lot more about the senior center in the coming weeks. So, thanks.
So Tammy, that is this Thursday, that means day after tomorrow?
Yes, correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Then, welcome, so.
Thank you.
All right, so we are going to move to item number, um, resolutions, number two. That's 2018-46, endorse the Milton Cross Plain Area School District School Facilities Referendum on November 6th, 2018. There's a George Marulas and Kurt, so.
Howard, that's something to say.
Did anybody else want to speak?
Oh, I apologize. Yeah, is there anybody else who wants to speak? Is there anybody else who wants to speak? Okay, I'm going to close that part of the meeting. Thank you, Howard. And then move on to the resolutions. And this is the resolution number two, 2018-46, endorse the Milton Cross Plain Area School District School Facilities Referendum on November 6th, 2018.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments, George or Kurt, do you want to say anything?
We just appreciate the fact that you're giving this consideration. It really, it really means a lot. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, the motion is to endorse the facilities referendum. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. George and Kurt, go ahead and do your things. Make it happen, so. All right.
Mayor, can we, there could, can we move to the other resolutions as well? That's when you have the, that's the council.
Okay, all right. Let's do the 20, resolution, 2018-45, resolution requesting exemption from county library tax.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? Okay, so the motion is to prove the resolution requesting exemption from county library tax. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So motion passes unanimously. Jocelyn is free now, so. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is presentation, and that's my city staff, including Mike Davis.
Right, it was just four short weeks ago when the, the rains had hit, the floods had devastated many parts of the community, and we asked for the council authorization for emergency funding, and you came through on that, and we, we put things in motion very quickly. We made a lot of progress. Can you hear me okay, Larry? I wasn't sure. Okay. So, on Monday, and I want to thank Bill for assembling all of the information and our staff that worked so hard to put it together. Many people, it's hard to name everybody who was part of it, but it was a real team effort in putting together the information for Dane County Emergency Management, which they're sharing with Wisconsin Emergency Management in hopes of getting a declaration from the federal government for FEMA's review, we believe, next week in the community. We don't know if that means a, an onsite meeting, or a review, or with the paper materials that we've been, we've provided them, which is a binder of photographic information, as well as details about public infrastructure, businesses, and residences within Middleton. So, I'm not getting this to advance. There we go, okay. Thank you, Bill. So part, and this is hard for folks in the audience to see, but the, this is a map of the residences who have reported damage. You see almost all east of the Belt Line, except for those in Hidden Oaks on the far west side. And see the locations and the, the code that you have in the key at the top. Blue is unknown, yellow is affected, and orange is minor. We are using the designations and how FEMA defines damage and to, to report that. So a flooded basement, from a FEMA perspective, is minor damage. Affected could be leaking windows, could be more minor damage in a, from a flooded basement. We didn't have anything reported in terms of major structural damage, homes collapsing or foundations collapsing. Then this shows you the same for our business community. Fifty-one properties altogether, they're listed there at the top. And you can see the majority of the major damage is around and adjacent to the Confluence Pond. And there are some particular concerns. I, I know ACS, which is building that's owned by Tim Carey, has a TIF agreement with the city. The foundation was, the structure of the foundation was severely affected. It's unclear whether they're going to be able to rebuild at that site or not. We, we think that they're going to try. I believe Van Nutt has talked with them, but it's not clear yet whether they'll be able to continue with their business at that location. Costco, as you may know, opened with, in one week of, of the floods. So they were able to, through their national corporate effort, really put together a Herculean effort to reopen by the following Monday. And many of those other businesses are very severely affected. I know that there's been some relocations. I think UW Health, Standard Imaging, I know Park Bank, a new salon, have all relocated, at least for the time being, until their buildings can be in better shape. And Van may have more and better information if you, if you'd like more information about that. This picture gives you a breadth of the view on Tuesday of the flooded areas. You see where Esser Pond is, and in the distance, the Confluence Pond. So this was provided by the fire department's drone that also provided the video that you saw a couple weeks ago. And then we have the listing of each business's estimated damages. Our building inspectors have been able to get to most of those properties to review, in some cases estimating that it's higher, in some cases estimating that it's lower. And then Bill has put in the chart here, the estimated percent of the damage based on the, I believe that's based on the assessed value, Bill? Is that correct? And then whether it's major damage, minor, or affected, again, under the FEMA guidelines. So it's, it's breathtaking in a bad way for the, the business committee, what we're seeing with all of these businesses being damaged in the way they are. Total of $33.2 million in structural damage, and that does not include loss of inventory and loss of business income from being closed. So I, I seriously think that this could be much closer to $100 million if you factor in all of that as well. But what FEMA is looking for is the more structural damage. And the kind of FEMA assistance that could possibly be available would be low-interest loans from the Small Business Administration. Whereas for residents, if the, if Wisconsin is declared a federal emergency area, then there's potential that residents could get assistance as well, under the umbrella of the state application. I don't want to raise any false hopes on that. We've been getting different news on that periodically, but the latest from Wisconsin Emergency Management was that there is still the potential for residents to get assistance as well. And that could be cash assistance, it could be low-interest loan assistance as well. So this Google map shows you all of it together, to give you a sense of the impact throughout the community. And then we've updated our figures for the public infrastructure. Now, and this is the summary page, a total of $6.9 million, 4.6 of which is the water control facilities, much of which is centered in the Pheasant Branch Creek Corridor. Some of this is not based on scientific estimates at this point. It's based on our best estimates of what it would take to make that corridor better for the long term for stormwater management. So we're looking at pretty significant costs. We hope that it's less than that, and we hope that FEMA will be a partner, and the state will be a partner, on helping us to rebuild our systems. You can see debris clearance, where we have more specific figures, protective measures, where we have specific figures that have been provided. Road systems, I think Sean's got some pretty good estimates there. And our public buildings and, and equipment, utility systems, most of that is more predictable than what we have for the water control facilities. But until we, we actually get in there with an engineering analysis, it'll be hard to know for certain what all it will take. FEMA also has a, a program for mitigation distinct from recovery, and that apparently comes along a few months later. I think we thought six months, six to eight months, from Dane County Emergency Management, so that you can position yourselves not only for recovery and replacement, but also for improvement down the road. I think this is particularly important for stormwater control, because we don't want to go through this again. And we've heard anywhere from 500 to 1,000, perhaps more, year event for this kind of rain in Middleton, 11 inches by my gauge at home, and within 16 hours. And I've seen in the Water Resources Management Packet that they had thought that a 9.97-inch rain was the thousand-year event. So I think it could be beyond that, that thousand, which is one-tenth of 1% chance. Now that could be that the models are out of date, which I suspect that they are, but even then, the, the percent chance of this kind of event was very minor. And unfortunately, it fell in a very concentrated area. And we have the detailed debris, protective measures, road systems, water control facilities. There you can see stabilizing Pheasant Branch Creek Corridor, Stream Bank, we're estimating at 2.4 million for one portion, another portion about a million. Bulkhead at Baskerville Harbor, about 900,000. Some damage to airport facilities, senior center, library, police station, the fiber connection, we're in the process of getting that moved now, under the Emergency Spending Authority. And the indoor batting facility, newly built, just as of two years ago, suffered damage as well. And you see the utility systems, our park, variety of parks with damages. I believe, Mayor, that Woodside Heights is still underwater to some extent.
Yep.
And, you know, for things that have been underwater for very long, and according to Mark Wagner, our city forester, if a tree's underwater for as much of, as a week, that is, bodes badly for that tree's survival.
So, we have had, and Matt could be here tonight, Matt Amundson, but the university approach the city on how they could potentially help. So Matt, Sean, Mark Wagner, met with a team of professors from UW, who are experts in the field. Of course, you know Ken Potter, you know Kirk Paulson, and you see the others listed here as well, who are looking to bring the potential of university resources through what they call a uni- university project. And that's typically one where you pay for them to do the work, and have work with students, but at perhaps a lower cost than you would get from consultants otherwise. So part of this is planning and design for the long term, as I alluded to, stormwater facilities in particular, making sure that we don't go through this again, so we're better prepared, if we can be, for this kind of disaster. And that's not to say that we couldn't be completely prepared for this kind of disaster, but there are some things, you see, that we could do. And then finally, Matt's working toward getting the creek corridor open. We have the stepping stones that need to be replaced, because that would be the way people could traverse through the corridor. And we also have the fiber to the police department that needs to be replaced before that pandemic. So we're hopeful that, that could be within a couple of weeks. And that's all I have. And if you have any question, oh, one other thing. We have raised $12,200 to fund the community, including Mike McDowell's GoFundMe page. He has transferred about $5,200 to the city. We've raised close to $7,000 in checks from the community. We're still taking funds as people want to contribute to help with our efforts and our initiatives. And I have plenty of letters going out, very short.
Yes, Susan.
Could you send us this PowerPoint?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll do that.
Anybody else? Any questions or comments?
Mike, in your notes, you mentioned about the GoFundMe page, and you wanted to hear the assessment of the city council.
Yeah, I had a resident approach me about offering to do another GoFundMe page, and I thought before we took that step, I wanted to ask you about it.
So I was just going to share my thoughts. I, we have some really wonderful organizations in town, the Friends of the Pheasant Branch, which is already a 501, you know, some kind of tax exempt instrument. GoFundMe pages are not, they're also not subject to the oversight you would have for a nonprofit. I would just prefer that we steer people to the Friends or to the Parks Endowment Fund, where you have oversight, you have the, the tax advantage for people that donate, and, you know, the kind of transparency and accountability I think that we would ask for, so that would...
Joanna, I would agree with all of that, but people can also send or give money directly to the city.
Right, if that's what they choose to do.
And the Friends has been doing an outstanding job.
Yeah, the Friends fundraiser coming up on October 12th, and I know that the Capital Brewery is going to run on October 20th, and I think they have one perhaps this weekend or September 20th as well. But the one on October 20th will be a larger event, according to what Capital Brewery said. And that is towards the fundraising that meets them today.
Any other questions or comments? Great, yes, Tammy.
I just wanted to say a thank you again to city staff for everything you've been doing, and for recording this information so that we can plan for the future, and I'm glad to hear the university is reaching out. But I've been very impressed, and so have my neighbors, with everything the city has done, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
The GoFundMe that I've gotten, I, I actually agree with what Joanna and Susan were saying too. I don't know that it's appropriate for the city to give it all directly in GoFundMe. If the resident wants to do it, I think that's great, but I was very uncomfortable saying yes to that.
Yes, since we have the mechanism, Friends of Pheasant Branch, and, and the other maple which we have.
Ways to do it.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Mike. Okay, so the next item on the agenda, the approval of consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, the motion is to prove the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. So the next one is the proclamation, National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Proclamation, September is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, whereas September is known around the United States as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and is intended to help promote awareness surrounding each of the suicide prevention resources available to us and our community. The simple goal is to learn how to help those around us, and how to talk about suicide without increasing the risk of harm. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. And whereas, according to CDC, each year, more than 41,000 people die by suicide, and whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death among adults in the US. And second leading cause of death might be placed between 10 and 24. And whereas, Milton, Wisconsin, is no different than any other community in the country, but chooses to publicly state and place our full support behind local educators, mental health professionals, athletic coaches, pack leaders, police officers, and parents as partners in supporting our community and simply being valuable to one another. And whereas, local organizations like Suicide Prevention Services, and national organizations like the National Alliance on Mental Illness are on the forefront lines of a battle that many still refuse to discuss in public. As suicide and mental illness unfortunately remain a taboo topic to discuss. And whereas, every member of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting our own battles. And whereas, I encourage all residents to take the time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and neighbors over the next few days, and to generally convey their appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. A simple phone call, message, handshake, or hug can go a long way towards helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, the mayor of City of Milton, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2018 as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the city of Milton. This proclamation was adopted as a regular meeting of the Milton Common Council on the 18th of September 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor of the proclamation say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. So the next item on the agenda is the assignment of hanger land lease agreement between Charles Ellison and David Schwartz, lot number 1332 to Alfa Lane.
Overpool. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of approving this hanger land lease agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. Miscellaneous, number one, recommendation on the selection of a form to provide auditing services for fiscal years 2018, 2019, and 2020.
Overpool is recommended by the Finance Committee.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, one abstention, so. Next one is the ordinance, second reading. Ordinance to amend parking restriction on North High Point Road between Greenway Boulevard and Terrace Avenue.
Move approval.
I will second that.
Any questions or comments? This is the second reading, and after this, it will become final. Okay, all those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
So the motion passes seven one. And the next one is the ordinance to create an exemption to protection on keeping of domesticated animals for special events.
Move approval.
Second.
Any question or comments? This is also a second reading, and it will be final. All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. Next one is planning, zoning, specific implementation plan approval, test of mixed-use development including Milton Market.
Overpool is recommended by the Plan Commission.
Okay.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. Need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you everyone, boy, this went very quickly.